We are going to begin tonight's meeting with April Call vote.
Tonight, we are starting the new rotation. Mrs. Hogan?
Present.
Mrs. Denon? Mr. Brophy?
Here.
Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Mrs. McWherter?
Here.
Mr. Updugrove?
Here.
Mr. Hemingway?
Here.
Mrs. Dieroff?
Present.
Mr. Fuess?
Here.
All present except for Mrs. Denon, she is might be having trouble getting on, but if she comes in later, I'll let you know.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we will move to a pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll move next to announcement of previous executive session. The Board of School Directors met on August 10th, 2020 for two hours to discuss personnel related to the acting superintendent role. And that brings us to public comment period number one, and I know that we have a couple of people signed up, so I will go ahead and read our statement. On behalf of the Board of School Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyertown area school district. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in the ASD Board Policy 006. This document is available at this meeting and on the ASD website. Participants properly registered on the signup sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if appropriate. All statements, inquiries, and comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of a public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Dr. Bedden, or Ms. Torsha, or a member of their staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes, and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left in the 30-minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board meetings and committee meetings, and we post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, that you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner, and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. So first, I have Mr. Damian Larkin to discuss the amended health and safety plan.
I have just brought Damian Larkin into the panelist room.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Larkin, are you with us now?
Hey, the famous unmuting.
All right.
This is Damian Larkin from New Hanover Township. President Fuess, I am speaking today regarding Agenda Item 12A, amend the health and safety plan, which I understand is being considered for board action this evening. I wish to express my support and gratitude to our teachers and staff in these uncharted and trying times. Many people in the community have unjustly maligned teachers and staff for their decision to exercise their right to request retirement or leave in advance of the previously planned in-person school opening. I hope that the board members and administration will provide their unwavering support for teachers and staff who are the very lifeblood of our educational institutions. The board, as well as the community, needs to be reminded that teachers and staff collective concerns over personal safety, as well as the safety of their families, is a direct result of the board's previous actions or inactions. As the issue of being short-staffed was repeatedly brought to the board's attention, yet the majority on the board voted against the advice and warnings of our professional educators. I am concerned that the board will stand idly by while teachers and staff stand to bear the brunt of the public's misguided ire. I ask that you own your previous votes that led to the precipice and provide strong public support for teachers and staff here and now. I commend the administration for finally taking corrective action, which protects teachers, staff, children, and the community at large. My sincere hope is that the board will finally listen to the administration as our subject matter experts, and I request that the board stops trying to allocate precious time and money for unreasonable reopening requests, especially when our education experts tell us that they are either ill-advised or impossible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and next, we have Liz Dyson, also speaking on the updated health and safety plan.
Check, check.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, Liz Dyson, Gilbertsville, I have a sixth-grade daughter, and I'm talking about the health and safety plan. Tonight, I'm hoping that someone on this board will please own some of the responsibility for the current situation we're in. The hateful words I've heard about our teachers being lazy, greedy, and unwilling to work, and parents demanding lists of names of those who put in for leave because apparently they've abandoned our children, makes it obvious that someone has not done a good enough job of explaining what has really gone on here the past month. The vast majority of professional staff requested leave paperwork after and only after this board rejected the recommendations of the Department of Health and education professionals, not once, but twice. This board wasted crucial time from the beginning by focusing on their wants, which had no consideration for realistic implementation in our current conditions. The district was forced to waste time to prove what was already obvious. We were not prepared to open in person logistically, educationally, safely, and perhaps even legally. The administration explained in detail that a nine-week virtual start would be the best way to begin the year. The presentations outlined clearly that this district could not offer six-foot social distancing nor 100% mask compliance, would not monitor temperatures, might need to put kids two and three to a seat on the bus, could not guarantee plentiful cleaning supplies nor personnel to do it. We faced lack of technology equipment due to the supply demands, and we could not answer the most basic questions of when a teacher would be able to use the bathroom amongst the plethora of others. And lastly, they predicted a shortage of professional staff for legitimate legal reasons. Again, the board chose to go against the recommendations of the leaders in the industry and basically said, make it happen anyway. Then and only then did the request for leave start pouring in. Why? Because this board gave the clear message that it will refuse to use science, data, and professional recommendations in decision-making. Teachers are trained to use data every day in teaching, they believe in it. Watching a majority of this board ignore it, especially in respect to an infectious and serious disease, is frightening. This board also made it obvious that the legitimate concerns of the administration were not being heard by them week after week. That's why we're here. So the board had to know this was coming, the rest of us did, simply stated, ASD was unable to meet the basic safety guidelines. There was not just one, but many direct statements saying this for weeks. Why did the board majority refuse to vote with this in mind? Was it a plan? Did you know it was bound to happen anyway, and you could walk away pleasing your constituents while blaming it on the teachers? If so, I hope they see this for what it was and recognize that this last-minute disruption to everyone's life did not come from the teachers, but from a lack of forethought, a lack of desire to listen, and possibly a lack of ethics of the majority on this board. Our professional staff are not our scapegoats nor our guinea pigs, and they should know we support them. I know I do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and next, we have Mr. Ralph Shar, and Mr. Shar did not have a topic, would you mind just stating the topic?
Mr. Fuess, I am unable to see Mr. Shar in the participant, in the attendee section, so let me do one last check.
Okay.
I'm searching by Shar, and I'm searching by Ralph, and I do not see any attendees with that name.
Okay, Mr. Shar is also signed up for period two, so we could see if we can get that resolved before then, maybe.
Okay, I'll go to the next one.
Okay, I apologize to Mr. Shar if he is on the line. Next, we have. Sorry, what?
I said, there's a Linda Garrin who has a hand up, I don't know if that's the.
Not sure, next, we have Jennifer Thompson.
Okay, I'll just let Jennifer in.
Jennifer Thompson, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, my name is Jennifer Thompson, I live in New Hanover Township and have a third grader and ninth grader in the district. In regards to the health and safety plan and the announcement of going 100% virtual, I'd like to talk about the teachers of the Boyertown area school district. The trenches that they are in right now are the deepest they have ever been. Our teachers will work hard in those trenches and will dig themselves out because they are dedicated and resilient. But they will be much more successful this year with unwavering support from the entire community. In the end, this will only result in successful students. The support our teachers need and deserve right now begins with leadership. It begins with all nine school board members. It begins with the superintendent and the rest of administration. Tonight's meeting is the perfect opportunity to show how you plan to support the teachers of Boyertown. You have the chance to set the tone and move forward. The example you set tonight will have long-term effects. Teachers of Boyertown, the reason your path is more difficult nowadays is because your calling is higher. Stay strong. In conclusion, it is time to treat these teachers like the national treasures that they are because our children depend on it. Thank you.
Sorry, what? Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. So we did not identify Mr. Shar as of this time, so we will move to the next part of the meeting. All right, so next, we have approval of the minutes. So we have a slew of minutes, do we tackle these one by one?
I would recommend.
Okay, so first is the minutes of the July 14th HR policy, PCIG committee, and Board of School Directors voting meeting.
Here, off move. A quarter seconds.
And I believe I heard Ms. McWherter as a second. Any questions or comments on these minutes? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll move to the vote.
Before I move to the vote, let the record show that Mrs. Denon joined the meeting at 7:18.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Fuess?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
Okay, next, we have the minutes for the July 21st Board of School Directors Special Meeting, where we discuss the COVID-19 health and safety plan.
Dieroff, move.
We have a motion.
Brophy, second.
Mr. Brophy, with a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes from the 21st? All right, we will proceed to the vote.
Mrs. Hogan? Mrs. Hogan? I'll come back to Mrs. Hogan. Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Fuess?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Hogan, are you able to respond?
I am sorry about that, something happened with my screen. Yes, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes 9-0.
All right, we've got three more. Next is July 28th, the July 28th minutes for the Board of School Directors meeting.
Hogan moves.
All right, we have a motion.
McWherter, seconds.
Ms. McWherter, seconds. Any comments or questions on these minutes?
Mr. Fuess, you could collectively approve the minutes in one motion if you wanted to.
Yes, I asked about that before we got started.
Okay, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so any, do we do comments or questions? Do we have a motion? I don't remember.
We have a motion by Hogan and McWherter.
Okay, comments or questions, move to a vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Fuess?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
We're on a roll. We'll do the August 6th ones next.
Hogan moves.
All right, we have a motion, second.
McWherter, seconds.
Motion and a second, comments or questions? All right, move to the vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy? Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Fuess?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
All right, next, we have the August 11th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Hogan moves.
A second.
All right, I'll give it to Denon and Updugrove. Motion and second. Any comments or questions? All right, move to the vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Fuess?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
All right, that gets us through the minutes. Next is the report of the president, and I have no report. Next, we have summer senior recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Fuess, at this time, tonight, the Boyertown area school district would like to recognize the students who have satisfied their high school graduation requirements over the summer. We are happy to award diplomas to Jonathan Bernhardt and Jordan Laros. Both students should have received something from the high school in recognition of their graduation, and we just wanted to share that we are very proud of them, that under these unprecedented times, and how difficult it was to finish out the year, that they met the challenges, and we are proud to report them as Boyertown area school district graduates. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. Usually, it is a neat experience when they're here. It's unfortunate, given the circumstances, but I appreciate that they're still able to get some recognition.
Absolutely.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we all just unmute ourselves and clap in case they're listening so they can hear us, congratulate them?
I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah, there you go, congratulations. Well, enjoy it.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, we have the treasures report.
Good evening, I would like to highlight some of the items, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would like to highlight items for the month of June. For local revenue, earned income tax was approximately $707,000, followed by a delinquent real estate tax, or $39,000. The real estate transfer tax was approximately $85,000, while the tax collector payment was $52,000. And in regards to the state revenue, the basic ed subsidy was approximately $4.1 million, the retirement subsidy, $2.3 million, followed by transportation at $976,000, and the special ed subsidy was approximately $964,000. Moving on to federal revenue, the Title I was approximately $47,000, Title II A was approximately $15,000, followed by Title IV was approximately $3,000. And in regards to June expenditures, salary and benefits account for 80% of the monthly expenditure. And followed by this concludes the highlights for the June treasures report. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So there's no, there's nothing to vote on this evening. So we move next to the secretaries' report.
No report.
Okay, and next, we have the solicitors' report.
No report.
And now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Fuess, at this time, I would like to go over the superintendent's report, the consent agenda, as presented, 11A. And that would be that the Board of School Directors approves the teacher on special assignment agreement dated August 25th, 2020 for Ms. Nancy Rose. She will be working as the acting elementary special education supervisor. I'm sorry, I keep hearing myself in my ears. She will be acting the acting elementary special education supervisor, approval of the teacher on special assignment agreement dated August 25th, 2020, between the Board of School Directors of the Boyertown area school district and Ms. Nancy Rose. This agreement is for Ms. Rose to temporarily fulfill the duties of acting elementary special education supervisor for the district. Ms. Rose will receive a salary of $96,630. For the temporary change of duty, this agreement is effective August 26th, 2020, and extends through June 30th, 2021, for an minimum of 200 days. The teacher on special assignment agreement has to retire somewhere. Mrs. Nancy Rose is moving up from special education liaison into this position. Working with all the elementary special education students and programs for, I'm sorry, the amount of years that she's been acting in the role of a liaison. And this was a natural transition for her to this position for the upcoming year. So I would be asking that the Board of School Directors approve the consent agenda.
I think you're right. So you heard me crumbling them? I'm sorry, everyone. Obviously, I'm very new to technology as I present today.
We heard everything just fine. So for the consent agenda, do we have a motion? Ms. McWherter?
McWherter, motion.
Hogan, seconds.
I believe, sorry, Ms. Hogan, Mr. Updugrove snuck in before you again. So we'll give him the second, Ms. McWherter, Mr. Updugrove, consent agenda, so we move right to vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff? Mrs. Dieroff? Mrs. Dieroff, are you still with us? Okay, I'll go on. Mr. Fuess?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0. I will put Mrs. Dieroff down as abstention.
Right, and I was given word that for the treasures report.
Do not put, do not put her down as an abstention.
Oh, I see her on the screen now, Mr. Sultanic. Mrs. Dieroff?
Okay.
Yes, I keep getting off and on.
Okay, did you want to vote yes for the consent agenda?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes 9-0.
And I was given word that for the treasures report that we should vote, as we typically do, to approve the report that was provided. So is that? Yes, Mr. Sultanic, is that all right for us to move back to that item?
That is the prerogative of the chair, so that is yes.
I'll look for a motion on that.
Hogan, motions.
She got, she made sure she got in there that time. Is there a second?
McWherter, second.
All right, so we have Hogan and Ms. McWherter. Any comments or questions on that treasures, treasures report? All right, let's move to a vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff? Mrs. Dieroff, we're voting on the treasures report. I see her on the screen, but maybe she can't unmute. Mr. Fuess, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Sultanic, that should read eight?
You just, you just put in absent for vote.
There was one no.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, excuse me, there was one no.
So it'd be seven, one, absent for vote.
For vote. Thank.
All right, now I need to look back to see where we're at at this point. All right, now we're on to the itemized agenda.
All right, so at this point, the superintendent's report itemized agenda as presented, amend the health and safety plan. The board hereby, the recommended action is that the board hereby amends its health and safety plan immediately to provide for a primarily virtual delivery model that will potentially provide for some face-to-face student special education program as determined by the acting superintendent or her designee. The acting superintendent is directly to modify the details of the health and safety plan to reflect the details of the board's intent, and is hereby authorized to file the plan with PDE. In addition, the acting superintendent will be required to study and make recommendations on the need to provide non-public transportation and any employee furloughs as part of proceeding to this virtual model. The acting superintendent will also have the discretion to move to modify its model of educational delivery in the event that the acting superintendent determines that on a regular basis, there is insufficient staffing to operate schools at the various levels in accordance with the approved reopening plan, or if by virtue of the COVID-19 positivity rate for employees and students, the delivery of education becomes unreasonably unsafe or extremely.
becomes unreasonably unsafe or extremely difficult in accordance with the PDE guidelines.
All right, so we need a motion.
Hogan, motions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
McWherter, seconds.
Ms. McWherter, seconds. All right, comments and questions on this item? Mr. Brophy?
Or change anything about the October 5 deadline? This is just for the five weeks we're going forward, correct? So I want you to make that clear, that's not moving the October 5 deadline.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. McWherter?
The deadline is dependent upon the COVID rates and teacher staffing in the future.
That would also be correct.
Just wanted to make that clear. All right, and one other question. What do we, I know that we're talking about the positivity rate and trying to decide upon a point, the inflection point of that, that we would decide whether to go forward or not with virtual, where do we stand with that?
Right now, the county, Berks County, is a little under 5% with positivity rate, and Montgomery County is sitting about 3%, as I reflected on that information today. I would say that as long as we are staying, you know, below 10%, obviously, is the recommendation, but I think that we need to choose a metric that we're all comfortable with because I think 10% positivity rate in either county is a bit too high and would, you know, give us some challenges in keeping students, you know, safe. We would be working with CDC, the Department of Health. My nurse supervisor has been tasked to be working with local health officials as well to find out, you know, what is a good metric for Boyertown Area School District and what positivity rate would be challenging for us to keep our students and staff safe, you know, while we have them in school.
All right, thank you.
See Ms. Denon's hand up?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Torsia, for reading that. I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. Was this, did, did we see this in writing as an attachment? Or did you just read it and it wasn't on our screen?
I just read it, it is part of my packet here. It's part of the, I'm not sure what is on our screen at this point, so I apologize. But it is, it is the agenda that is printed out.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's all, that's all I, that was one of the questions I had. And so, you know, basically, what we're voting on is, as it stands at this moment, we're planning on doing all online instruction with the exception of bringing in our special ed students until October 5 deadline. And if things, if things continue to trend positively and we can, you know, we can change to this A-B schedule, we will try to bring students in. But at this point, right now, the immediate plan that we're voting on is to have us do virtual learning, with the exception of some special ed students, between now and October 5th. Is that, I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
That would be correct, Mrs. Denon.
Okay, thank you so much.
Just, Mrs. Denon, just to clarify, we will be bringing in our pre-K students in on the 31st as well.
Oh, right, yeah, I, yeah, okay, yeah, I was aware of that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff? Mrs. Dieroff? Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight with one person absent for the vote.
Next on the itemized agenda is approval of flexible instructional days. The recommended action is that the Board of School Directors approve the five flexible instruction days to be used during the 2020-21 school year.
All right, do we have a motion?
Hogan, motions.
All right, Ms. Hogan, in a second. Mr. Updugrove? Any comments or questions on the flexible instruction days? All right, I don't want to not call on you, but Ms. Denon, I believe your hand is still up from the last, correct?
Yes, I'll take it down, sorry.
Yeah, just making sure.
Yep.
All right, let's move on to the vote then.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff? Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one, with one board member absent for the vote.
Sorry, do you mind, just repeat, was it eight, one, or?
I'm sorry, eight, zero.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Next to item C, stadium and softball naming. The recommended action is that the Board of School Directors approve naming the softball field Fair Park, and the football stadium will remain Memorial Park, Memorial Stadium. Stadium and, from the August 14th and August 21 weekly report, I just wanted to reiterate that stadium and softball field naming per Policy 702.1, naming rights shall be considered by the district. However, approval of any and all proposed naming of district property is subject to board approval. I don't think I need to review anymore.
Any motion?
Hogan, motions.
McWherter, motions.
All right, we'll go Ms. Hogan, second, Ms. McWherter. Any comments or questions on the stadium and softball field naming? All right, move to the vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff? Mrs. Dieroff, are you able to unmute yourself? No. Okay, Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, zero, with one board member absent.
All right, next on the agenda would be item B, approve the independent contractor agreement between Boyertown Area School District and the Foundation for Boyertown Education. I would like to make a correction. In your weekly report, the cost associated with this was printed as $16,050. That was last year's cost. It is $17,000. So we wanted to make sure that you had the right amount. The recommended action would be that the Board of School Directors approves the independent contractor agreement between Boyertown Area School District and the Foundation for Boyertown Education for services rendered from August 1, 2020, to July 31, 2021. I do want to remind everyone that this is for the Boyertown Area School District Pre-K Counts Program, which is entirely grant-funded. The Boyertown Area School District works collaboratively with the Foundation for Boyertown Education to provide support for the district's pre-K counts, grants, and program management to ensure that the grant standards and guidelines are met.
Looking for a motion?
Hogan, motions.
Dieroff, seconds.
All right, Mr. Dieroff, seconds.
I'm back.
Welcome back. Any comments or, any comments or questions? All right, we will move to the vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff?
I'm off again.
No, I heard you, Mrs. Dieroff.
Everything went off on my screen, okay. Okay, when you're done calling me, I want to say something.
What are you voting?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Can I, can I say something?
Do, is it about one of the items that we've already?
Yes, because I don't know when they're gonna make me unmuted, I mean muted again. It keeps, my screen keeps changing.
Yeah, now I understand the difficulties. Yeah, if you want to make a comment real quick, please go ahead.
Yes, real quick, I just wanted to say, I'll vote on those three votes that I was absent, I would vote yes. If I'm allowed to do that, I don't know what the rules are.
I'm not clear on that either, I don't know if Mr. Sultanic-
We don't have really a rule on that particular motion, but those motions passed anyway without your vote.
I think, I think the record reflecting her vote would be fine.
Okay.
We could put in the minutes that after the fact, Mrs. Dieroff indicated she would have voted yes, but we would record it that she was absent at the time of the vote.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sultanic.
Next on the itemized agenda is E, personnel, and that the Board of School Directors approve, ratify, the personnel items as presented. That would be the motion at this point. I do want to highlight two personnel. We are having Rochelle Towne join the administration as the curriculum supervisor for grades K or 6 through 12. She is replacing Mr. Ron Wales. And we would also like to welcome Stacy Tieri as the secondary special education supervisor. She's another hire from within Boyertown, and we're very proud and happy to have her joining our special education administrative team. So personnel as presented, Mr. Foose.
Thank you. We need a motion and a second.
Dieroff, motions.
I think I heard Mrs. Dieroff with the motion, and-
Yes.
And Mr. Brophy, did I just hear you? Second, okay. Any comments or questions on personnel? All right, we'll move to a vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Mr. Foose, that completes the superintendent's report for this evening.
All right, thank you. Next, we have old business. I don't believe there's any old business. Okay, so we will move on to public comment period number two. And we did have two people signed up for that. First is Mr. Damian Larkin. Okay, yeah, he did, he wasn't, I believe he said that he might not speak during the second period, but he did sign up. So we will move next to Mr. Shar. We'll see if we can get Mr. Shar on. We have Molly Larkin, just want to check if that is, Mr. Larkin? You trying to get back in? Could, could folks do us a favor real quick? If you are either Ralph Shar or Damian Larkin and are in the meeting, could you please use the raise hand feature just to identify yourself? And if we can't get that figured out, then we'll, we'll move on. Okay, all right, both of the speakers who had signed up we're not seeing here right now, so we're gonna move forward with our agenda. So our, I just got a notification from Mr. Larkin, he emailed us and said that he'll pass. Okay, so our next agenda item is board comment. So board comment. Mr. Brophy?
Okay, tonight, we're here again modifying our back-to-school plan. So I feel compelled to go over some of the history of this. Several weeks ago, this board met to hear a presentation and vote on the administration's plan for return to school for our Boyertown students. This plan, called the scaffolding plan, was presented to the board as the best approach for a safe return. The plan met all CDC and state guidelines for distancing, cleanliness, and other health factors. At that time, some members of this board, in an attempt to measure the plan against a baseline of full return, were roundly criticized by concerned citizens, parents, teachers, and even other board members. and even other board members for requesting information and not just approving the plan. We were in effect exercising our due diligence that you would expect elected officials to perform by requesting this information to help us make such an important decision. We received dozens of phone calls and hundreds of emails telling us that the vast majority of our district believed this plan was the best alternative available, and letters stated we need to prove the plan so we could move on, get the district to move on. In the absence of any other completed plan, this board approved that return-to-school plan and in effect told our residents that they could now move forward with their individual plans as the issue of return to school and what was required of them and their children was resolved. Here we are again, a few weeks later, saying in effect that we have to cycle your lives again because this plan is no longer viable. So what's changed? Has the pandemics spiraled out of control? I don't think so. Are hospitals running out of beds? Actually, no. In fact, the positivity rate has gone down from when it was a few weeks ago, and that's the science we keep hearing we're supposed to be using. The administration also didn't decide to amend this plan, it no longer worked. Harrisburg didn't reject the plan. The overall board did not bring up any new questions to the plan's validity. So why are we here, not just making minor adjustments to this plan, instead voting on a one-month delay? Because some of the very people who touted the scaffold plan only a few weeks earlier has now decided it's not safe enough anymore. A small but large enough number of our teaching staff have decided they no longer believe the plan is safe, and if we stick to this plan, they will take advantage of enacted laws and request leave until the rest of us come to our senses and agree with them. Make no mistake, they're within their rights to take this action and force the majority who wish to return to brick-and-mortar learning to acquiesce to their demands. The administration nor the board can enact any action to have them follow the desires of over 75% of our parents and a large number of our other teachers to go back to providing the education our children deserve. This action and the action facilitated, this action and this action alone facilitated the change to a soft opening of the approved scaffold plan. Over the past several weeks, some of the emails I received stated out that I am saddened and disgusted at the actions of some members of the board. I'm now using those same words to describing the most recent action that has forced us to change again. I too wonder, along with the parents and the students, when is this continuing adjustment going to stop? I hope this is a last revision and that we can return to the agreed-on plan on October 5th deadline as prescribed. I have a couple other related issues to this, I'd like to spring out right now very quickly, and pretty much they're gonna, they're more like requests for information of the, of the administration. As we move forward into the school year, the question of extracurricular activities has come to the forefront. Many of our surrounding districts have shut down all activities for the foreseeable future. In line with the desire here at Boyertown of a majority of our constituents to return to some form of in-person instruction, it would be in line with some of our board members' positions that all extracurricular activities continue. I support that position, but I have a few questions I need to ask the administration to answer before we take any formal actions. What extracurricular activities will be permitted? What are the protocols that will be enforced to assure your safety pursuing those activities? And lastly, what would be a trigger point to shut down the activities in case of an adverse reaction? In addition, what is the administration's justification in continuing extracurricular activities while we're not back in the buildings? Another request for information, I think we, I think the administration's already moved on quickly, is that should, should we fail for whatever reason to return to the in-person element of our approved scaffold plan by October 5th? I request that the administration begin, begin now to complete a list of all personnel, of all departments and classifications in the district that will not be required in the distance learning model to be considered for furlough. Could you please provide that information by September 16th? With, with a board action being at the meeting of September 28th? Thank you. Is that, do I need a motion for that, to have you do that, or will the administration follow that? Provide the information on the list by those dates? Yeah, this isn't really a motion, this is a request for information, but, and in the past, we've been required to get board majorities to get some information. I don't want to know if the administration is willing to give us that information, or do I need to get, do I need to ask for a vote of the majority?
I would ask for a vote of majority to, to give the, the rest of the board to, an opportunity to, to comment and to vote. But the administration, on my behalf, we don't have a problem recognizing your request and providing that information. But I do think that that should be something that should come from the majority of the, the board to make sure everyone is in agreement with that directive.
Excellent.
So were there two questions in there for this motion?
There are two questions.
And so what exactly?
So my understanding is that the, the motion is for the board asking the administration to give information with regards to specifically personnel not required, to provide a list of personnel not required if we would remain in a virtual instructional model and to provide that to the board by September 16th. The other questions that were posed by Mr. Brophy, I don't believe need to have an action or a motion as far as his questions about, you know, what activities, the protocols, the shutdown. Those are general questions that I am happy to, you know, fulfill those answers. I can answer many of them right now, but I think it may be better to just respond to the board so that I have everything in place and collectively give you that information.
I'm fine with that, I'm not, I'm not looking for you to answer those tonight. I'm looking, looking to give you, like, very, in the near, very future, like maybe next week.
Sure.
I don't want to put you, I don't want to put you on the spot now to answer those questions right away, I just want to bring them out to you, and I think that's information we need.
I appreciate that, Mr. Brophy. But I do feel that there should be a motion, and Mr. Sultanic, I'm not sure how it should be worded, that there is a motion on the floor for the superintendent to provide a list of personnel to them by September 16th voting meeting of people who may not be considered required to be in place while we are doing virtual learning. But I know that I really made that a very long motion, so Mr. Sultanic, maybe you can make it short and sweet.
Can I, can I just clarify? Sorry, can I just clarify real quick? I believe, and again, our sister can correct me if this is, if this is inaccurate, but I believe the way our policy is, is written, a request, a request that's made for information can be evaluated by the superintendent and the, and board leadership, and typically if it's something that is already being worked on or likely already being worked on, it's usually not much of an issue. If it's something outside of what would have been worked on and requires an inordinate amount of time, then it requires an affirmation of a majority of board members. So I guess the, the first question is, are those things that are already being worked on? And if they are, then I don't know that we necessarily need a motion.
I would tell you that the extracurricular activities, what activities are there, the protocols, what it would take to shut down, and the administration's reason to continue athletics would be easy answers. With regard to acquiring a list, that would take for the administration to sit down, review all staffing, and to determine, you know, who would be people that would not be essentially, be able to be used, and, and make sure that it was a collaborative effort. So that, that would take more time than the other questions.
And that is, that's if it appears we're not going to come back on October 5th.
Right.
If we're coming back on October 5th, it becomes a mute point.
Mr. Sultanic, did you want to clarify anything?
Okay, I agree with your rendition of the policy. So the only thing, if there was to be board action this evening, would be limited to the request for the individuals who have requested leave over a certain time period? Is that what they, is that what?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a request for, if we were to extend the, if we weren't able to overturn to the hybrid model on October 5th, evaluating which staff would not be required to fulfill, continue fulfilling the virtual model.
Okay, so it would be for the administration to prepare a list of potential individuals who may be eligible for furlough if we were to go under that scenario. Now definitely, if we were to go under that scenario, that would be something we would do at that time. So that's, the question is, do we do it in advance of that time when the board will be required to vote on that, and what would be the implications of that? So it would be a motion to direct the administration to develop a potential list of job classifications and the number of individuals in those job classifications that would have to be eliminated if the district were to move to a virtual platform one or after, what date would that be, October 5th?
Yes.
Yeah, October 5, 2020. And don't ask me to repeat it.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for that item then. So any comments or questions? Actually, since this is a motion, I guess, for an item that was not previously on the agenda, then we would have to allow public comment?
That is correct. And the public comment is not to comment on whether we should furlough individuals. The public comment would merely be on the issue of the information request.
All right, that being the case, we'll do public comment first. So I know, and we have, we haven't made much use of this feature yet, but there are a couple of people on the attendee side with their hands raised, but I believe some of these were raised previously. I'm not sure if they're wishing to speak right now or not, but we will, we'll try to give each of these people an opportunity. So if any, if any member of the public wants to speak about this specific request and this motion, please raise your hand at this time.
Mr. Foose, I'm sorry to interrupt, who seconded that motion?
I believe it was Ms. Nyman.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brophy made the motion, and Ms. Nyman seconded.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have, first is Ava Carmichael. Ms. Carmichael, are you wishing to speak on this motion?
Hello, the Ava Carmichael hand raised was an accident, sorry.
Oh, not a problem, thank you. Okay, next, we have Angela Koschinsky with the hand raised. All right, Ms. Koschinsky, we brought you in as a panelist. Do you wish to speak on this motion?
I don't even know what we're, what motion you guys are, are doing right now. Can somebody tell me?
Okay. Yeah, there was a, there was a request to have the administration provide a list of roles and a number of people in those roles that if by October 5th we're not able to begin in-person instruction as we had planned under the scaffolding plan, that, that could be considered for furlough.
I guess that's what you have to do. I'm, I'm just speaking as somebody that is a direct care worker, and I have already had COVID. And, you know, that is why I chose to have my child virtual, knowing that half of these teachers were not going to be in the school. And for me, not that I'm afraid of COVID anymore, but knowing how fast it moves. That's how I feel.
All right, well, thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry that you had to experience that. I, I hope that you're recovering just fine.
I am recovering just fine. I work in a fantastic facility, even though we, as healthcare workers, were not provided with the most accurate PPE. We did the best that we could. But I do want to let you all know on record that COVID runs very quickly. And when we went from one to five people, to 33, to 45 people infected, and we lost 11 people because one person was not following the rules and through her own volition infected.
I, I apologize, Mrs. Koschinsky. This period right now is actually specific to the motion on the table, but I do, I do appreciate your, your thoughts and, and you sharing them. Okay, we have one more person with their hand raised, Ms. Diana Smith. Ms. Smith, were you wishing to speak on this motion? All right, I apologize, I think there might have been some confusion regarding that procedure when there's a, a motion that was not previously on the agenda. So we'll, we'll move now to board comments and questions, and I believe Ms. Hogan wants to get in the queue.
Yes, thank you. Are we voting on the motion right now, or are we just in general board comment? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Right now, it's commenting on the motion.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, so I, I know that Mr. Brophy said, I want to say it was the end of September when he wanted the information by, was that correct?
Yeah, I believe our meeting for the end of that, of the month.
So then the motion would be that we would have this information on if we can't return by October 5th?
So he just, he just clarified the middle of September, I think the 16th.
Okay. Um. I would, I think I would vote no to this, simply because I, I'd like to give the administration a little bit more time because in order to figure out if we're going to open or not, we really need to watch the data, and we need to follow, you know, with the request of if we have enough staff to open, so. Yeah, I won't support it, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions before we vote on this motion?
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
I'd like to clarify what Mr. Sultanic said as far as what the motion is.
He said we're not allowed to repeat it. No, sorry, go ahead.
I said, don't, again, I'm in the process of rewriting it for you, I know you sent me an email. Okay, it's a motion to direct the administration to develop a list of job classifications and individuals that would have to be furloughed if the district would have to move to a virtual platform as of October 5, 2020, it being understood that the documentation would have to be prepared by September 15, or on or about September 15, 2020.
All right, is that, did that help clarify the motion?
Yes, it did, thank you.
All right, I have two more people, I have Ms. Denon and then Ms. McWherter.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure I, I clearly understand what the motion is. So we're asking the administration, and I, I we're asking the administration and I guess it would really be up to the HR department, so maybe they need to weigh in on this too in terms of the feasibility of this. But what we, what we're asking is if we cannot return by October 5th, we would want to know what personnel we would not need anymore. So example, it would be, it would be like cafeteria workers, custodians, that kind of stuff. Or are we asking if we go, if we have to go all virtual, will we need less teachers? And then when will we furlough them? Is that what? I'm confused about what, what the list is for.
It's for all job classifications.
Okay, so in other words, so I'm just, I'm just a little bit confused about is that, is that information that we're going to be able to get? Because it seems like the whole thing is so fluid. Like if, if if COVID, if it ends up that, you know, we don't have any outbreaks and, and the numbers are going down and we have the correct safety protocols, then I don't think it's going to be an issue because we're going to be able to open up and bring, and bring kids back. But if things, if there's an outbreak or things are not going well, then people would probably be less apt to come back and we probably wouldn't be able to go to full school. So I guess I'm not sure if we can even get that information because it seems like the, it's such a fluid situation. That's all, that's what I'm just confused about. Like what's the point of getting the information?
I guess for Ms. Richard and Mrs. Torsa, is, would you mind speaking to any challenges that might be encountered with that, providing that information and the timeline that was requested?
Sure. First of all, many of the leaves won't even end until the beginning of November that people have taken. So those leaves will continue until that time period. So as far as anyone else taking leaves, it will depend on if we have a more of an outbreak that we will need to stay virtual for a longer time or remote for a longer time. So will there be more teachers possibly taking a leave? It's possible. We won't, we can't predict anything. And that, that's the bad part of it, if I must say. But and they have up until December 31st to take the FF-CRA leave. They have to use that leave up until December 31st, so they have time to apply for this leave yet.
Can I interrupt? This is not what I'm asking for. What I'm asking for is a list of the people that we, that we won't need, what positions we won't need if we go, if we don't go back into brick and mortar and we stay, and we stay in a distance learning. I don't need to know the names of people. I just need to know what positions are we still going to have to fill?
Okay.
What positions are we going to not have to fill to move forward from October through the end of the year if we, if we're not coming back into the building?
Okay.
It's about as clear as I can put it.
Yeah, that, that's a little bit clearer. That's what I kind of, I thought maybe that's what you were. So in other words, Mr. Brophy, you were saying like if we don't need cafeteria workers or custodians or that kind of thing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's determined we cannot come back into the buildings on the 5th, although I hope we don't have to go there because that's my hope is we will be, that just what do we need to go forward? That's pretty much it.
And we'll probably have a better picture of that till that time because we'll know, do we need some, how many powers will we need? To support the one-to-one students especially and the special needs children? Do we need as many custodians? We should have a better, clearer picture of that.
And that's what, that's what I picked September 15th or 16th for, to give you time to see that once you go back in. And then it gives the board and the administration time to go over and come to an agreement on that list that we all agree this is the right thing to do. I don't want to get a list like three days before and then we scramble and really don't do it right. And I figure from, we got from the 16th to the 28th, it's enough time to do it right and make sure, you know, I don't want to furlough people that we don't need to furlough.
Right.
So I just want to make sure the impact of this is only what the impact has to be and no more than that. So that's pretty much what I'm looking for.
Well, according to Mr. Sultanic, we will have to have some kind of motion in place, to have the list in place, to have at that board meeting September.
Yes.
Correct. Right. You're welcome.
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Hey, just one moment. Alright, Ms. Hogan, please go ahead.
I just wanted to thank my colleague for his clarification. After hearing that, I think it makes, it does make more sense to me. So I do appreciate that.
Alright, any other comments or questions? Can we move to vote? And I understand Ms. Deroff is not able to hear at the moment.
I'm back.
Oh, she's back. Alright, Mrs. Deroff, do you have any, do you understand the motion on the table?
Yes, let me vote now before you lose me again.
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and vote.
Yes.
Mr. Fuess, would you like me to read the motion?
I think we understand it at this point.
Okay. Should I proceed with the vote?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter? Mr. Updike Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroff? Has already voted yes.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Fuess?
No.
Motion passes 8-1.
Alright, that brings us back to board comment. Mr. Brophy, you had, you were speaking and then you had the motion. Do you have any other comment?
No, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Alright, Ms. Hogan, I see your hand's still up. Did you want to speak?
I do, thank you. And so I just wanted to say that almost a month ago, I'm going to say three weeks ago for lack of, I don't have the date on me. The administration recommended that we do nine weeks of virtual as a start. The board voted against that. And it was made clear during that meeting that HR issues were a serious concern. I think we as the board need to basically, the last minute change of virtual, in my opinion, falls at the feet of this board and not on our teachers. We knew this was a possibility and yet we gambled with, you know, we threw the dice and took a gamble. It did not turn out the way, you know, it didn't turn out to support the board vote. Teachers have requested legitimate, they put in legitimate and legal requests for leave. They have done nothing wrong. And they just, I heard in public comment period number one, someone said, "Our teachers are national treasures." I just want to, I agree with that. I think our teachers are amazing. They work hard. And we should be showing them respect and treating them with respect. So. That's all I have to say on that subject. I did have some questions about athletics moving forward. So.
I just asked quick, do you believe these will require Mr. Palladino?
Yes.
Is he online?
He was. I know he was having some issues, but I believe he did reappear. Okay.
Should I proceed or no?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to make sure we had him available for you.
That's okay. I just didn't want to jump into it if he wasn't there. Okay, so. One of the questions I had, you know, we have had athletes practicing in conditioning. And have we had any incidences of people getting sick? Of course, I'm not looking for a name, but have we had any issues in, in that area?
I'm going to speak for Mr. Palladino and nothing has been brought to the attention of the administration. And if someone would have been sick, we would have been notified as well as our nursing supervisor.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then the other question I had was, do we believe that we will have enough people, like enough opponents to compete with, for lack of a better way to put it?
Again, Mr. Palladino had shared with me the outcome of yesterday's athletic directors meeting. And I did share that out with all of you this afternoon. And I think I might have shared it to you last night when I was doing email around 11 o'clock. So I couldn't remember if I sent it out twice. So at this time, it does appear that we will have multiple teams to compete with at the varsity level. We have discussed about middle school sports because there is lacking teams there. And the being able to get the middle schoolers to practices in conjunction with being out virtually was going to present some problems. So we would have some challenges at the middle level, but we have been discussing how we wanted to proceed there.
Okay, so we do, I did see the email that you sent out and I appreciate that. That I was just curious about if they, if they thought that was enough to, enough people to, to compete. So I assume that's a yes. Okay.
I've lost Mrs. Torsa, her computer died. Sorry, what was the, what was the question? Is it something?
No, no, it was really, I was just reiterating that, yeah, we will have enough people to compete against if we decide to move forward with varsity sports. With high school level sports.
Mrs. Hogan, as, as of right now, we do have a majority of our league who is still participating. We meet on a, almost a daily basis to discuss that because it is, it is ever-changing. But as of right now, we do have enough to compete at the varsity level.
Okay. And one other question, Mr. Palladino. Other, and excuse me for my in eloquence, but other teams that are, I assume, practicing in conditioning right now, are they sharing any information on whether or not any of their athletes are getting sick or have been infected?
The only thing that, that we have been aware of is, is any, anything that has been in the press. School districts aren't sharing that information, you know, as a just to let us know type of thing. It would just be if it happened to make it into, into papers or on social media, that's the only way we would know about it.
Okay. And then I assume that this is true. Of course, I couldn't imagine that it wouldn't be. But all of our coaches and staff are, of course, following the safety plan and making sure that our student athletes are distancing and mask wearing or doing whatever, you know, is with, within those guidelines that were set forth.
Yes, they are. We've been doing some spot checks and everyone has been following the health and safety plan. And I must say that the, the student athletes are doing a fabulous job because they know that by following the plan, it gives them a chance. If they don't follow the plan, it, it pretty much could end their season. So they're, they're doing, the coaches and all of our student athletes are doing a great job following the plan right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. We have received like a large number of requests from parents to get more information on whether or not we are going to proceed with fall sports. I would like to, I don't know if we need to vote on that or how that would work, but I would like to figure that out so that parents and student athletes have some peace of mind and know the direction in which we're going because they put an enormous, I know students put an enormous amount of work into preparing for their seasons. So out of respect for them and the work that they're putting out there, I think we owe them some information.
That, that information will be put out most likely this week. It's just been a, it's been a very rough time with the PIAA in the past few weeks, trying to get an answer from them. I know our District 1, they are coming up with plans also and our league is also too. But we will be sending updates and posting them on our social media and on our website to let everybody know that as of this date, we're still prepared to start practices on September 7.
So for moving forward with fall sports, is that, is that a, is that something that's going to need to come before the board for a vote or no?
That would be more of a question for Mrs. Torsa.
Yeah, well, she's still getting up and, up and going. I'll just speak to what was articulated to board leadership from, from Mrs. Torsa. The administration at this time, we had passed, I don't know why there's an echo, I'm hearing an echo. But back in June, we had passed the health and safety plan for sports and band. And the recommendation of administration has not changed from following with that plan. So there's nothing to act on at this time unless they were to change their recommended action or if we were to have some type of motion. So as of right now, that is the way we're still proceeding.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, I have Ms. McWherter and then Ms. Nyman.
Hi, Monteina.
And then Ms. Deroff.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for Mr. Palladino. Those competitions, I'm sorry. Those competitions where one is, we have an echo in here. Much better. You can't hear me? Okay. It's okay. So Mr. Palladino, I'm sorry. Those situations where there are large gatherings of people have, do you know how they will be accommodated, such as, you know, large invitationals? What can you tell me about that?
Right now, most of the invitationals, like say for our cross-country team, they have been, they have been canceled. So we'd be looking to, because PIAA guidelines and guidance that they sent us last week, we're only limited to certain number of participants in every sport. So it pretty much keeps those invitationals from happening in, in the way that they always have happened. Like for example, for, for a cross-country meet, we are only allowed to have 12 people in, it's called a first heat. And then that, once that race is over, then we can have another, another pot of 12 come on and run that, it's like a staggered race. So we're not having any meets where there's 250 people congregating together waiting to start. Right now, all our indoor events are limited to 25 personnel and that includes players, coaches, my athletic trainers, myself, officials. Outdoor events is 250, but that 250 is student athletes and game personnel, does not include any spectators. As of now, we're not allowed to have spectators at any event.
Alright, thank you.
I just have to say, that's a bummer about the invitationals. The, the start of a cross-country race, especially if those invitationals is something, is a sight to be seen. And there's a lot of strategy that goes into how to start one of those races, but for safety reasons, I'm glad that they're, they're taking that step. Next, I have Ms. Nyman and then Ms. Deroff. Okay, yeah, Ms. Nyman is letting Ms. Deroff go while we have her.
Okay, Mrs. Torsa knows how it feels now. They locked me out a while ago. I just had one question. Mr. Palladino said something I didn't expect to hear. They're doing spot checking. What does that mean? I just had one question. Mr. Palladino said something I didn't expect to hear. They're doing spot checking. What does that mean?
That just means that I'm going, when we're in voluntary practices, I do go around certain times to make sure, pretty much to check up on our coaches, our student athletes, to make sure everybody is adhering to our health and safety plan.
Did they get their temp? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's just me pretty much showing up to make, making sure they're social distancing, all of our coaches. And kids are wearing masks when, when they're supposed to, that they're following our screening procedures that we do before a practice starts.
So you do take temps every day before practice?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and when the sport starts, and other, we play other teams. Do we intend to have those other teams go into our buildings, our locker rooms and so forth?
No, we, I've already notified the, our opponents that we will not have locker room facilities for them. And same with our officials, that they're pretty much, when they show up, be ready to go. And it's likewise for us going in other facilities. They most likely won't have them available for us either.
Okay, but even if they would, I, I would feel much better if we didn't use them.
No, we're, we're going what our coaches call old school. We're getting off the bus and getting ready to play.
Okay, thank you very much for that information, sir.
You're welcome.
Brandon, I had my hand up too. I don't know if you saw it.
I was not sure if that was left up or not, but I'll, I'll add you after Ms. Nyman then.
Okay, Mr. Palladino, are we, the day of a game or a meet or whatever, are we checking temperatures of all the players, including the opposing team?
Yes, we have made a request to the league and during, for PIAA guidelines, they state that it is up to the home or hosting team for every, everybody needs to follow their health and safety plan. So I did notify all of our opponents that when they are coming to Boyer Town, that they need to be screened via our process before they get on the bus at their facility. And then they'll give us copies of those screening reports once they get here. And we'll do the same likewise for them. We'll screen our, our student athletes before we get on the bus and go to another facility.
But we're not screening them here?
We're not screening the opponents. No, they'll, they'll be screened by their personnel at their school.
Okay, and this plan can go up in smoke at any time? If one child would get the COVID, heaven forbid, but it could come down to one child, one student, and the CDC could knock us down, correct?
They could, and that's what our health and safety plan dictates when we do get, if we get a positive read. I notify Mrs. Torsha and we contact CDC and see how we're supposed to proceed from there. And then they make that decision.
So everything's okay right now, but come tomorrow, it could be all knocked down?
It, it could be.
Or at any time?
At any, it could be at any time. We're doing our best to try to make sure that doesn't happen, but could it happen? It, it could.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I just clarify on that point? I believe in the health and safety plan for, for this, that it, it stipulates that depending on if, if there were one or multiple athletes or participants, depending on, on the extracurricular that either had an exposure or a positive, that there would be some sort of attempted contact tracing and identifying the scope of the problem. And it may be isolated to a single team and not the entire extracurricular program.
Correct. We're, we're doing our best to eliminate, when we used to have shared locker rooms, we're eliminating those shared locker rooms. So that way, if we do happen to have a positive or an exposure, it, it's only going to be limited hopefully to that one team. We're keeping teams pretty much from mingling with each other, whether it be in locker rooms, hallways, training rooms, our facilities where we'll have water at, things of that nature. So we're doing everything we can to try to keep it, if we, if we do have the unfortunate circumstance of having a positive, that we can, you know, limit it to a very small number.
Thank you for that. I have Ms. Denon and then Ms. McWherter.
Thank you, Mr. Foose. Just, just a couple of general comments. I think that, you know, I totally understand the frustration of the community, the parents, the teachers, the administrators, and certainly, you know, we're frustrated. But I do have to agree with some of Mrs. Hogan's comments that I think had we taken the advice of the administration in the very beginning and said we were going to go virtual, you know, we, we may not have had some of this back and forth. But on the flip side of that, I understand that this is such a fluid situation. And what, what really I think has caused me some pause is that since, that since we started discussing about the opening of school and what we were going to do, things have really changed. We, we had students for the most part from, from March until June in a bubble. And they were not exposed. And the data showed that kids don't spread it and kids don't get it. And then as soon as some, we started opening up, children started getting, being, being able to spread it. They, they got it. Some children were even getting sick. And as we learn more and more about this disease and the effects that it has on people, I think it has given, I know me personally, some pause. And I think people are being a little bit more cautious than perhaps they were in the very beginning because we have learned more about, about what COVID-19 can do to, to people. So I think that that, that's part of the reason that I think opinions about things keep changing. I don't believe, when, when we talk about opening schools, one of my, one of my biggest concerns from the very beginning is that I did not feel that we were doing everything that we could in terms of safety. And it was just, it was just my personal opinion, but I really felt like we should be doing the temperature checks at, at school. I was uncomfortable that they were not going to be done at school. I was uncomfortable that although we technically could, could start school and bring all of the elementary kids back, we, we were well aware that we were not going to be doing six feet. We were going to be doing three or four in some cases. So that was, that was a concern. And I knew that going into it, that could be a red flag or cause some teachers to think about coming back. So I certainly am not in a position to judge whether or not, you know, what, what a teacher's own decision is. We do not know the, where, where teachers are in their lives, whether they have underlying conditions, whether they're taking care, care of an elderly parent, whether they have a child who might have asthma. So I do, you know, I, I try not to judge those, those decisions of our teachers. But what I do know is, and I talked to many, many teachers because being in the community for 25 years, I, and I've said this before, I, I know a lot of, of different teachers. And I think that from, from conversations that I have had, teachers are equally heartbroken. They want to be back in that classroom. Virtual is, is not a very good option, period. And the younger, the, the younger, the grade that the teacher teaches, the more they felt they would like to be back in the classroom. But for a, but for some of them, and it, it just wasn't safe. And unfortunately, I think what happened in this particular case is that the way the chips fell with what teachers were retiring or requesting leave, they were in some of our areas that are very, very hard to fill. So if it had been elementary school teachers, I think it may not have been an issue because you can, you can get elementary school teachers. But there's other teachers that you can't get. So when you look at that, would you, would you like your child to be in class in a scaffolding opening, sitting in a study hall because we can't find the 11th grade AP math teacher or the physics teacher? Or would you rather have your child doing virtual learning for that particular time? So I see both sides of it and I under, and I understand. But I do think, you know, we have to have a little bit of understanding why our, our staff wasn't coming back. And it wasn't anyone's fault. I, I do want to reiterate that. There is a shortage of getting some of this PPE. We, we can start out with some of the cleaning supplies. We know that things are backordered. This is no one's fault. This is the nature of, of COVID. So I, I just, I just wanted, I really felt that I needed to say that at, at the get-go. And not being a scientist, not being a doctor, not being an educational professional. It was, there was so much information to absorb and data to look at that, you know, I felt more comfortable deferring to the experts and the pandemic team. And that's what I kind of, I had been doing all along. So, you know, just because we can do something.
Ms. Denon, we have reached about three minutes.
Okay. Can I just wrap up a little bit about the athletics? I just want to reiterate, we're taking temperature checks. We're doing everything that we can to keep our athletes safe. And the one, the one question I did have is, I, I missed the part about if someone does come, come with COVID, we don't have to notify the other school, but do we have to notify everybody on the team? Or are there like HIPAA laws about that? I'm not, I'm a little confused about, about that if someone does come down with COVID.
It would pretty much be, and the easiest way for me to explain it would be like the sport of wrestling. When, if, if somebody would come down with a, a skin or a skin rash, there are steps we need to take if we did have contact with another school. So if, if, if we have someone who, for example, say a soccer player, if they test positive for COVID and we played a school the day before and those kids were exposed, we would have to notify that school. So they will be looking at, you know, they'd be checking for symptoms, things of that nature, so they could notify their parents that they did have an exposure to somebody who tested positive. So we, we would have to take care of that. And we would expect, and other schools would do the same, give us that same courtesy also.
Okay, and it is, is it up to the group, the individuals, whether they are going to quarantine or not? So in other words, let's say somebody on, on one of our teams is, is test positive for COVID. Did, did we then require a quarantine or we just require that, that student or that person just to stay away for 14 days?
They, that, that would, that person who tested positive would have a 14-day quarantine. If anyone else, and Mrs. Torsha can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. If anyone else starts showing symptoms, then we might have to do a shutdown. But that would be up to, the CDC would tell us how we have to, the amount of, of time they were exposed, the, the distance they might have been from, from the person who did test positive, they would let us know how, how we want, how we should proceed with our team.
Mrs. Denon, if I can, if I can just interject, the Department of Education had provided us, provided us with some direction with regard to COVID-19 symptomatic K-12 student or staff process. There is a flow chart that is a part of our health and safety plan. It is what we're using in our schools. And I have also suggested to Mr. Palladino that he insert this as part of his plan. So it is the guidance that has been, you know, shared with us from the Department of Education and is, is something that we will be using. And it really guides us whether a student or staff presents with symptoms and what we should be doing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I have an additional comment. My hand was up.
Yeah, I have Ms. McWherter and then Ms. Hogan.
Thank you. Mr. Palladino or Ms. Torsha, either of you can answer this, but I think you've just answered it as well, but I just want to confirm that. You talked about a positive read before, and, and I'm assuming that a positive read comes up when you're doing your symptom check with the kids, the temperature check, if something comes up, that they would be on that flow chart. And, and that's what I, I mean, you weren't going to wait for a positive test of COVID to come back?
No, no, there, there's a specific flow chart that we need to follow. And if they are symptomatic, they're going to go into that isolation room that we have identified in the schools. And Mr. Sultanic, I'm sorry, not Mr. Sultanic, Mr. Palladino has shared with me that they will have tents or a isolated room so that no one else would be going in there or it wouldn't, you know, jeopardize a space that would be used, you know, regularly. So we have identified, you know, those places as well.
Okay, I just want a clarification. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Foose. I just wanted to clarify that when I say athletes, I am including members of our band and our cheerleaders in that term. As a football mom for many, many years, I saw the absolute athleticism and dedication it takes to participate in either one of those activities. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then I had one more question for Mr. Palladino. Will we be streaming games and events since there are no spectators allowed so that people can still, you know, watch them? I'm a bit of like a fanatical Bears football fan, so I want to make sure I can still see them play.
Yes, right now, we're in the middle of, we're installing cameras in both the Bear Gym and in Memorial Stadium for, it's, it's on what's called the NFHS Network. It is, there is a small subscription fee, but any game held in the Bear Gym or Memorial Stadium will be streamed. So parents can, parents, community members, students, they can watch those games with the live stream.
And that live stream would catch like the cheerleaders and it would also catch like the halftime shows performed by the band?
It would catch, from my knowledge, it would catch the halftime show. And it would, if the cheerleaders came onto the field and did a routine. But it's a, it's a, it's a camera that pretty much moves with action. It's an automated camera. It's not something that I control or somebody in studio controls. But we will, we're, we're looking at everything we can right now to get every, you know, team, student who is in the band or cheerleaders, when we do have a game, to try to get them involved so they can get their recognition also. Whether it be a smaller, I've talked to Mr. Langdon, whether it be a smaller pep band because we do have to stand or a 250 number. And really, the only teams that worry me is football because we're, we have large teams. But even if we have to give it a smaller band for, for, for one game and then do like a B squad for another game or bring a band in for say a soccer game, we're, we're looking at everything we can right now to get, to keep, to give our kids a sense of normalcy in a normal time.
I appreciate that. Like I said, having been the mother of an athlete, well, he's, he's no longer plays, but I'm still his mom. But I know how much dedication goes into that. So I'm very happy to hear that parents and fans will still be able to watch and that our athletes and band members will still get the recognition they deserve. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman had a question.
Yeah, on a different subject. Mrs. Torsha, can you have, I guess Mrs. Pitts, check it out. I was informed earlier that PA had $40 million of funding that prior to the COVID did not send out. And I don't know if we got all of ours that we were due or not, but could we check on that? Because I'm told there's quite a few schools that were shortchanged money. Thank you.
For those who couldn't see, she was nodding her head. So yes. All right, I'm going to go real quick and then we'll try to wrap up.
I heard it.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Dieroff, did you have any additional comment?
No, I just meant I heard her shake her head.
Oh, okay, yeah. So the, oh, actually, first I have a question. We've talked a lot about sports and even bands. Are, are things like Key Club and those types of activities still able to take place? No, Key Club does a lot of volunteer work throughout the year.
I'm sure that they're working some things virtually. I do know that the group that welcomes our incoming ninth graders, and I apologize, I'm on the spot and I'm having a senior moment with everything else that has been kind of a debacle on my end here, so I apologize to the community. It's, they're, they're like our, our welcomingers at the middle school, they are doing virtual things. So there's a lot of things that are taking place with regards to our clubs and, and, you know, the, the Key Club or we might want to look at our student council, you know, many of those people are still working behind the scenes.
That's great to hear. I, I appreciate having those opportunities for them to get involved. I, I wanted to touch on two things real quick. One, I wanted to touch on two things real quick. One.
Link through.
Oh, yeah, link through. I typically don't like to vote no on something without explaining myself. So not that I didn't appreciate the, the motion that was made. My, my no vote was just the tying it to a specific date because I think the administration would likely be working on that regardless. I didn't want to tie them to a specific date, but I appreciate the, I appreciate the request that was made. It is an important one. So I wanted to explain why I voted no on that. The other, the other thing I wanted to speak to was, this, this week was supposed to be our first week of school. We pushed that back a week. So a lot of memories are showing up right now of the different chalk-the-walk events and things like that. And those are things that, that are, you know, sorely missed. I helped organize the, the new Hanover ones the past couple of years and disappointed not to be able to do that this year. But there, there are a lot of those types of traditions that are going to have to be put on hold. And one, one of the traditions that we have in Boyertown that I think is really important to highlight is we have not had a work stoppage or strike in this district. And I think that that's important to point out because our teachers have really been good partners in this district. And I think that they're really well-respected across the board in this community. And I want to wish them the very best going into this year. I think it's important when they express a level of concern that, that we acknowledge it and try to respond to it. And in this circumstance, we can have the best plan in the world and be very thoughtful about it. But if we're not able to execute it, then we need to evaluate that. So I believe that that's where we're at at this point. So I do appreciate all the work that's gone into everything, and I certainly appreciate everything that our teachers are, are doing at this, at this point and preparing. And I know my, my kids are very eager to, to meet their new teachers, even if it's virtually to begin. So wish them, wish all of our teachers and staff the best of luck heading into this new, quite unique school year. All right, so with that, I believe we've.
May I just have one comment? I'd like to just tag on to that. Because I would like to, everyone to know that Mr. Stout and I have had the pleasure of working collaboratively with our teachers' union and the leadership that they have in place. And we are, you know, constantly working with them and trying to make sure that we are hearing what their, their concerns are. We're trying to address them. We want to bring kids back to school. We want to do it in a healthy, safe way. Children need to come back to school. It's, it's been a long time. There's a lot of different needs that aren't, you know, being met, obviously. And we can only do so much virtually, but I just wanted to praise the BAEA leadership for the work that they have been doing with us collaboratively. And I want to just, you know, let the teachers know that, you know, the administration is here. We're, we're very supportive of them, and we appreciate all that they're doing. But we want to get kids back to school. We want to get our doors open. Even if we can't get everybody in at the same time, we want to get them in in some capacity. So I just wanted to reiterate and, you know, publicly thank the association for the collaborative work that they have been doing with us. It takes a village, is all I can say. So thank you.
And Mr. Foose, I'd like to add on to that, and I'd like to thank the school board for giving this week of the 24th because I can tell you that a celebration goes out to the Office of Teaching and Learning and those involved with planning the seven days of professional learning for our teachers. It truly has been, people laugh when I say this word, but robust and very detail-oriented and really providing opportunities for our professional staff to, to learn what virtual learning's about. So there have been many elements. I am, again, inundated with questions, and there are questions that are welcomed. I know the Office of Teaching and Learning is working diligently behind the scenes, having office hours to answer as many questions as we possibly can. And without the support of the board allowing this, this opportunity for this professional learning week, it would have been an incredible challenge to start. So a thank you goes out to the school board for that and as well as the hard work that all of our teachers are doing right now to truly learn a new craft of teaching that they have not been accustomed to. So we are up to the task and to Mary Beth's point, Mrs. Torsha's point, we are all working collaboratively to get to this together. So thank you to all.
You're not going to, you're not going to end with the motto on your, on your mask?
We got this.
I heard you present that to the teachers last Tuesday, so I thought it was great. All right, with that, next we have upcoming meeting dates, which I believe are all listed on our website. I think next, next week, next Tuesday is a committee meeting. But please check our website and calendar for future meetings, and I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, I'll make it.
All right, Ms. McWherter, so Ms. McWherter followed by, second by Ms. Dieroff, and we are adjourned.